From the executive session that began about ten minutes ago. Is any action of council as a result of the executive session?
No, your honor.
And we'll call the seven thirty meeting to order. The invitations be delivered tonight by council member Karen Spencer and our pledge by voice count approved twenty-eight. Please, please, right.
Almighty God, we come to you tonight with grateful hearts, thanking you for the charity in which we live. We thank you for our volunteers, we thank you for all of our city employees who keep us safe and who afford us the wonderful services of the entire community. We thank you for the stability of our government and has allowed us to create the community that we all live. Go with us tonight as we make good decisions for the betterment of our city. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Audience, attention. Color guard, advance. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do. Color guard, post the colors. Color guard, return to post.
My very faithful, very nicely done, and I appreciate it. I'd like to welcome you all to our council meeting tonight. It's the first meeting of the month, which we have no planned zoning commissions, joint meetings, and it kind of goes a lot quicker. We always begin with citizen comments. Do we have any requests tonight?
Yes, Mayor. Catherine Thompson, thirty-three seventeen Burney Long Drive.
Hello, Mayor and council members. On the agenda tonight is an add-on rate tax reduction from zero point three four five seven per one hundred dollars valuation to zero point three four two five. This is on top of another recent rate reduction from zero point three four eight. The recent and proposed drops are less than five dollars and seven dollars of actual savings annually on a two hundred thousand dollar assessed home. How will Grapevine residents spend that huge savings? The last tax reduction would not have given my family enough of a savings to buy half a package of diapers or to buy one gallon of gas for our two-vehicle family of four. The tax rate would be even lower if the city did not spend money unnecessarily. For example, on a high-priced city lobbyist, legal fees on a lost open meaning tax lawsuit, and on one of the highest compensated city councils in the entire state, in which you're paying yourselves outside of the letter and the spirit of the city charter. I'm concerned tonight as well about a front-page story in our newspaper about Grapevine compiling millions, that's millions, of records on innocent residents and visitors as the Grapevine Police Department scans license plates. Not only did this story make global coverage, it was carried nationally, citing Grapevine's current two million stored plate reads and no data retention policy. I'm a hundred percent on board with scanning plates for kidnapping or stolen vehicle concerns. I'm not okay with keeping data on innocent people indefinitely. There's no reason for law enforcement agencies to retain data on the comings and goings of innocent Americans. Many police departments delete non-hit data rapidly. They also have specific policies that license plate scans will not be collected, stored, or shared for data mining purposes. Data stored is data that can be hacked and could expose our city to liability. There's no good reason for Grapevine to have two million plate records stored. Scans should be kept for days or even weeks, but certainly not months or years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, here.
All righty. Then we next have a couple of presentations to make.
Mayor, as you come forward, let me make all of you aware of a presentation that we make tonight. On May the seventh of this year, we had a great story that occurred here in Grapevine. Mr. Richard Hughes, who had been moving here, was in the process of moving into a new home. His wife was still living in Colorado, but as he was preparing to move into his new home, he had a very unfortunate accident which created some severe trauma to his head and face. As he stumbled out into the yard, some neighbors, Ms. Elizabeth Ball and Mr. Stephen Richardson, saw Mr. Hughes, and they sprang into action, literally, comforting him, preparing, stopping some bleeding and comforting him in several different ways, as they also alerted nine-one-one. Subsequently, it was determined that their actions very likely saved Mr. Hughes' life, and they not only did that, but they took care of his property, they waited for his wife to arrive from Colorado. So, tonight, we, you, in celebration of the Grapevine Fire Department, and I know the city of Grapevine truly applauds Ms. Ball and Mr. Richardson as we make these presentations. So, I'd like to ask them to come up, the families that are involved.
You're standing by, you might want to be next to the chief already. All righty. You know, this day and time, people are less likely and more likely to become good citizens Americans. They don't want to get involved, and they sense there's a certain amount of liability when you do get involved. And so, we're really grateful we still have good citizens Americans in our community. People are willing at a moment's notice to go to aid of those that need it, to save lives and to save property. You heard the chief tell the story, and it's a very interesting story. It's a story that we all need to take to heart and think what we would do in those situations, and hopefully that everybody here tonight would want to respond and also be a Grapevine hero. We have recorded the story of their rescue and their assistance on May the seventh, and we would like to give Elizabeth Ball, Stephen Richardson, one of these beautiful certificates that tell the story that they can frame or keep, remind them of what they did, establishing themselves, and all concerned that they're wonderful citizens in our community. And as mayor and behalf of the city council and the fire department, all the citizens of Grapevine, we would like to give these to you for your heroic action and give you a chance to tell anything further about the incident that you would like to and what might have motivated you to respond so heroically. Thank you very much.
I guess I'm going to say just a few words, because I know it's a very busy evening. Personally, I am very, very flattered with this. But to be very honest with you, I don't feel that I had a whole lot to do with anything. I think it was a matter of God just put me and my sister at the right place at the right time, and I don't know that I deserve a certificate as much, I think, that we ought to give Richard something, because, yeah, for making it out of the house in the first place. You know, honestly, the biggest thing I'm going to look back on this is, is not the certificate, but just because I had an opportunity. And not many of us can say, hey, I had a chance, I had an opportunity, and I was just, like I said, thankful that God had me in the right place at the right time. And we've gotten a really good neighbor out of the deal and somebody I can go drink coffee with once in a while. Thank you.
And it was the first day I met him.
It's a great way to meet neighbors.
You know what he looked like.
So, thank you, chief, and mayor, and council. Thank you, thank you all very, very much.
I just wanted to say also, thank you so much for being there, Richard. Bad situation, but a wonderful opportunity to meet some really fine folks. Welcome to Texas, we're glad you're here. I just want to say also, just like Steve, I think that the whole thing was very divine, and, you know, God had us at the right place at the right time for a really big reason, and I really have a hundred percent belief in that and absolutely no doubt. So, you know, when you look and you tell your children that, you know, God has a plan for your life, and just be faithful and those sorts of things, you know, sometimes it's not the big stuff that God has a plan for. Sometimes it's just being there when somebody really needs you and having the ability to minister and to do what they may have done. So, you know, God does have a plan for your life, and I'm looking forward to the next part of that plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, real quick, I'd just like to say that I'm fortunate to have some neighbors that work out of their house. I'm lucky that they were walking out when I was running out, and I think I narrowly escaped. I think, I don't know, if they weren't home, I don't think I would have made it to the house next door. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. And now, Mr. Greg Long has reported on our Sister City. Here he is.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members. It's a great pleasure to be giving you a brief synopsis of the Sister City Report and present a very unique gift that Provost Tom Kerr and the citizens of West Walthian presented to us previously. My family and I, we've had five wonderful, enjoyable years, and we've hosted several people that have come from the West Walthian area, and each one of us has been, it's been just fantastic, and we've made some lifelong friends. And even got a couple of kids that say they're going to displace my daughters at my house for a second. About five weeks ago, twenty-one citizens from the city of Grapevine and Sister City representatives went to West Walthian, and a few of those folks are here in the room with us tonight, and we had the opportunity to meet Provost Kerr, leader of the council, I can counciliar, I can never pronounce that right, John McGinnity, council member Harry Cartmill, who will be heading up the joint committee and taking it over from Provost to kind of take a few things off of his hand. We got to tour the city hall, and Mayor Tate presented the provost with a nice gift from the Sister City Committee, and it was, it was pretty cool. They have a nice deal, and then on this within a day or so of that, the most interesting part, I believe, for me, of the whole thing was marching in what they call marches, it's parades, the whole town closes down, and they march around, and there's a few unique sightseeing opportunities that everybody should experience, say, at least once, I do believe, as I see PW chuckle over there. There was a culinary exchange, one of Jordan McHenry, a member of Grapevine's Young Entrepreneurs Academy, traveled to West Walthian as part of this culinary exchange. She had the opportunity to work at a place called Champagne Restaurant. It's an upscale restaurant, a little bit go, and she thoroughly enjoyed it. She talked about her whole riding around and some tours and how she was pretty pumped about it. She had the opportunity to work with some of the instructors of the West Walthian College as well during her stay. There was an educational tour also, thirteen students from GCISD, a couple of teachers and chaperones participated in this exchange with West Walthian Academy. They stayed in homes of fellow students of the academy, so they got to get the whole thing, the educational, the cultural, the life in the West Walthian area. There's a lot of neat things there. In the sixth year of this very competitive golf exchange that we had between GCISD and the West Walthian golf students, we had some students that stayed in other golfers' homes in the area, this is the culinary kids did, and they had the opportunity to play four local courses, including San Andrews, the birthplace of golf, and that's just why everybody's bucking because it plays the game. And the final night, which was June seventeenth, we, the Grapevine City delegation, we enjoyed a dinner and presentation of the Gallagher Cup, which symbolizes this tournament, and we got to have it at the Bathgate Golf Club, which is a very nice venue. And we also had the further honor of having Stephen Gallagher, who's a touring professional at Bathgate, and the cup is named after his father, and I believe the subdivision that our family stayed in was named after Stephen's father, as well, it's a very nice place. It was really neat. Fortunately, our kids didn't win this time around, but I think it's like four to two their favor or something like that, but, you know, they got to come back over here. And also Catherine, the Grapevine golf team, Will Pappas, was recognized because he got a hole-in-one on the final day of the competition. And so, Mayor, I would like to present this beautiful gift, and it is just entirely neat, but I'm going to let you hold it up for everybody to see, that way if it gets broken, it's not my fault.
It's a piece of gut flash that says to Grapevine Mayor, Wednesday, eighth, June twenty, I believe, twenty thirteen. Presented by West Walthian Provost Tom Kerr.
It's a wonderful opportunity for people to get involved. I encourage people to seek out this exchange. It's worthwhile. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. We had a great trip. Our high school of golfers didn't bring the Gallagher Trophy back home, but they really enjoyed playing the Scottish forces, and only the Scots know how to play them well, apparently. But we were proud of them just the same. We had great weather, and we had some people in our delegation that hadn't been there before that really enjoyed the trip. And it's really about the young people in the exchange and the education, and the weather was good. And every time I go, I'm never six feet amazed, anyone will leave that beautiful country, but it's very hilly, and they planted the corn on the hills years ago, and they had to walk behind a mule, or they had to plow uphill, plow downhill, had to walk uphill and milk the cow, everything they did, they had to go uphill. And it's given me a greater appreciation, because when those Scottish Irish came from Missouri and came across the Grapevine Prairie, they named that Buffalo Trail Buckle Road. Not just because the land was obviously fertile, but it was as flat as a pancake, and they named it Buckle Road, the gates of heaven, and they realized they'd never have to climb again, I guess. So, it's good to understand where the founders of our community came from and to keep their spirit alive. A gift to me, on most occasions, always a gift to the people of Grapevine, and we want it displayed here in the city hall of West Walthian. There's all kinds of memory of it that our community has given to the provosts or to the people of West Walthian. They have it very appropriately displayed, and hopefully we can find places this will join the other accumulation of guests that we have from our Sister Cities for all of our people to enjoy. Next, pardon me, next we have new business to consider a resolution accepting certified tax roll, having a total appraised value of nine billion eight hundred eighty-six million six hundred ninety-three thousand fifty dollars. John McGrane.
Honorable Mayor, Member of City Council, we have received from the, from Kern County, Dallas County, and Dent County Tax Assessor, Tax Districts, their net taxable value in the form of a certified roll, or required by law to honor or assume thereafter August first adopt or accept those rolls, so this resolution would be council's accepted. Those rolls, the net taxable value that is currently on those rolls is six point two four six, well, I mean, it's six million two hundred forty-six million seven hundred eighty-seven thousand seven hundred fifty-one dollars. With that, I'd be happy to answer your question.
All right, consideration of the resolution is in order.
Almost approval.
Second.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Next, to consider a proposal to adopt that on the tax rate for coming through the chair.
Yes, the truth of taxation laws requires the governing bodies, if they propose a rate that's higher than the effective tax rate, to have a motion to set a certain rate at a future council meeting. So, what should be doing tonight is taking a vote on a proposed point three four two five per hundred dollar tax rate, and we would propose the adoption of that rate at the September tenth meeting, Tuesday, September tenth, twelve o'clock meeting.
All right, explain that a little bit further. The effective rate, we left it last year.
Yeah, the effective rate would have been point three three nine oh six eight per hundred dollar valuation. Our current tax rate is point three four five six nine five. We will be lowering, we're proposing a lower rate from the current tax rate, but higher than the effective rate at point three four two five.
Because of the reevaluation of property and the new construction?
That's correct.
And we've had some of both. So, the proposal is to split basically that pretty well in two, right?
Yes, sir.
And it would result in a decrease in our rate of how much?
It's roughly point zero zero two, two seven, three one nine, three one nine five.
That's right. I recall. Well, you know, I've said some, for some time myself, that the way Ted appraises property is not accurate, and it's not fair to see the tax rate go up two point five percent during this year in construction and before, this is on January the first, before really the single-family market started back. To me, it has an artificial element involved to it, and so I certainly think it's in order to reduce the rate to help compensate that. On the other hand, we did have some substantial growth with several major projects that did positively affect our tax roll without increasing the value of single-family homes and the burden of our taxpayers, so I think, I think some reduction is certainly in order.
Well, and I just want to say, we have one of the lowest tax rates in the state of Texas, so I'm going to move for approval.
We have the lowest rate of any city our side.
Exactly.
John, can you? So, I don't understand the difference in what we do going forward, if we go in this route versus just going with the effective tax rate.
If you went to the effective tax rate, you don't have to do anything else but adopt the effective rate on September tenth. As I said earlier, truth in taxation now, if you go anything over the effective rate, you have to have this vote to put it on our future agenda, and we'll have two public hearings, and we have to advertise that in the paper when those public hearings.
There's also factors in effect to affect how much the valuation on a single-family home, a homestead can be made each year, and also the exemptions for our senior citizens' rights.
That's correct.
And those are pretty generous, too, in our community.
Yes, they are.
Very generous.
So, John, what this is doing is just placing it on the future agenda for us to consider this rate. It's just a procedural thing.
It's a procedural thing. You have to actually take a vote to put it on the future.
And I made a motion for approval.
And I would second that motion gladly. We've lowered our add-on rate, this will be the third time, actually, since I've said this, council, and it's very easy to go up, and it's a lot harder to keep lowering.
It just seems to me that we could go with the effective tax rate and get the revenue that we need to run the city, and we wouldn't have to take any further action.
We have a motion and a second, and further discussion, if not all in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Item five, consider a resolution authorized in the city of Grapevine to participate with the North Central Texas Council of Governments as a member of the Air North Texas Program. If you have something, will explain that to us.
Honorable Mayor, Member of the City Council, before you, the resolution to join with the North Central Texas Council of Governments as a member of the Air North Texas Program. It's a program that's primarily a public awareness campaign for our region. They have a branding component of it, and it promotes behavior within our citizens and within our organizations that is environmentally friendly and good for air quality. Any questions?
What kind of cost is involved with this, Mr. Stone?
No additional cost.
No cost? Who's going to provide the printed material and the educational component of it?
We will, and they can provide us some of the, you know, the information and some printed material, but primarily we'll provide the printed material and have information on the website.
And so, we'll be funding the printed material that we distribute, or we'll get it from them?
We will.
Okay, and so, there's still no cost involved, even for having it printed?
Well, there will be as part of, and honestly, we have environmental initiatives throughout the year, and currently we have twelve a year, and that was potentially one of the initiatives that will happen, one of our environmental initiatives, and of course, there will be costs involved with printed material and.
Sure, and I'm assisting you, we'll just be taking one of those, so it's kind of rolled into it already?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. No further questions?
Second. All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Resolution approved. Item six, consider developer agreement, Chateau Bristol on development, limited LP to participate in street utility improvements in the round of the Gallerian Main Street.
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor, Member of the City Council. The problem we're discussing tonight is in the northeast corner of Wall of Maine, it's the new development that Gary Hazelwood and his group are proposing. The developer agreement that you have before you this evening, Staff Fields, is a win-win situation for both the developer and for the city. Under normal developer obligations, he is, or they are, providing street lighting, water to their site, fire protection line to their site, sidewalks on the perimeter of their site on Main, Wall Street, and Jenkins Street, and curb and gutter on the perimeter of the site's main wall, Jenkins Street. Added construction by the developer in this project is curb and gutter on the east side of Jenkins Street, which is across the street from their site. New. A new concrete drive approach into the large Jenkins and Wall parking lot. Provisions for a banner pole on Main Street and you, I think in your packet, Attachment B shows, or Exhibit B shows that location. They are also providing funding up to $10,000 for reconstruction of paving of Jenkins Street and funding of $5,000 for materials for an eight-inch water line in Jenkins Street from Wall Street North to Northwest Highway. The city's participation in this, we have a four-inch water line in that road that's dead end and it's over 40 years old. So the eight-inch line that the developer is willing to pay for the materials for is something we really like to do. So we are going to install that line with our crews. Additionally, we have had some thoughts about putting a storm drain system in Jenkins Street to try and collect water on the south side of Jenkins as it approaches Wall. We've never really done anything because Jenkins Street north of Wall was not what we would consider an improved road. Didn't have curb and gutter on either side. With the development of Mr. Hazelwood's site, there will be curb and gutter on both sides of Jenkins Street. And so now is the time to install the drainage system in advance of the curb and gutter work and the final payment. We will, as we are able to do, we have the skill set and the equipment, we will reconstruct basically the subgrade of Jenkins Street for that block and we will overlay the roadway and bring it up to a state that we like in our asphalt streets. So that is more or less the agreement. Now, some other items in the agreement is the developer will be allowed to close Jenkins Street during the construction from Wall Street North for approximately 250 feet. That's to their north property line. Access to the two properties on the corner of Jenkins and Northwest Highway, they will still have access to Wall Street, but it will be blocked basically at that southern limit for the duration of the construction. They will reopen the roadway for our big festivals, Main Street Days and Grape Fest. And they will effectively reopen it and give it back to us 72 hours prior to the time that we typically close Main Street for these festivals. And we coordinated that with Gail Hall and that's the timeline she would like to see. And so everyone's agreeable to that. Now, Councilwoman Spencer called me earlier this afternoon expressing a little concern about some wording in the agreement that just wasn't clear. And her concern was that we needed to make sure that when it's all said and done, Jenkins Street is still a public street. And their ability to close the street is only during the construction of their development. Once the development is complete, the road is public, it's open, and it stays open. We've made those adjustments in the agreement. It's minor wording changes. We went into it thinking we had it pretty well spelled out, but Mrs. Spencer had a few concerns, so we got that squared away. A couple of unique.
And where is that spelled out? Because we don't have the revised document.
No, it's in the sixth where it has, as you pointed out. And it does address that.
Thank you. Will you be providing us a copy?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
And then a couple of other unique elements to this. They will, the head and parking on the east side of their building, you can see that on the screen above you or in front of you. That parking is roughly 50% on their property depth-wise and 50% in street right-of-way. The right-of-way line runs up pretty much right through the middle, north-south of the parking. So they have requested and we have included in this agreement the ability for them to sign those parking spaces, all of those head and spaces, for the use of their tenants. And that would be, it's not something, it's not a towable issue, but they did request that. We've got the same situation on Main Street just south of the Willhites area in front of Jake's in that area. So in light of the fact that they're footing the bill for the curb work, they're footing the bill for the pavement, and in fact, it's been that way forever. When the old building was there and there were actually tenants there, they parked in those slots. They weren't well-defined slots, but they parked in those slots all the time. So that is one of the unique elements. Another is that they are building some very wide sidewalks around the perimeter of their building. Part of it is in the street right-of-way, part of it is on private property. They are dedicating public access easements for all the parking, for all the sidewalk of his own private property, so it is effectively open to the public to walk around the perimeter and continue walking up and down Main Street. And they will be maintaining those sidewalks. That's about all I've got on this. If you have any questions, we have an answer.
I would move for approval in accordance with Mr. Lester's revised wording in the sixth where it is on page one as it relates to the roadway closure during and after construction.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not all in favor, all opposed, motion carries. It's approved. Item seven, consider a change order number five for the wastewater treatment plant head works facility construction contract. Mr. Lester.
Thank you, Mayor. Member of City Council, you have a significant change order, change order number five before you tonight for the wastewater treatment plant head works project. Excuse me. In the memo, we have outlined a lot of the components of this cost. And I'll be happy to explain any of those that you might have. And I will attempt to go through them somewhat quickly for your benefit. First of all, let me say that the way this project falls out, the head, the headworks of the plant is on the uphill side, which is at Shady Brook. Everything falls from south to north. The original wastewater plant that Grapevine has was train number one, which is the closest one, two, Shady Brook. Shady Brook's on the bottom of the photo. Trains two and three were constructed later and they're off the photo, they're to the north and on the other side of the actual building complex. But what I'm trying to point out is we're rebuilding the headworks and we have limited room to build the headworks itself, plus we have very limited room to reroute the piping through train one to fit all of the connections together. And what you see on the screen is effectively the pipe routing from the new headworks and where it will ultimately work its way down to trains two and three in the upper right hand corner of the photograph. So with all that being said, we've run across a number of issues as we've been constructing this project. Train one was built in the 50s, so we've got roughly 50 to 55-year-old pipes in the ground. And as we've got in and near those pipes, we've had them collapse in places. We've discovered that we have more deteriorated lines, so we had to go in and repair those immediately. The contractors were out in the middle of the night. We had to, you know, prevent sewage overflows because in fact, that is the line that serves the entire plant coming from the old headworks. That was one. We then have, excuse me, we then have the white line, if you're looking at the photo, that is the air line back from the pump house to the aeration basin. That line is also extremely old and it's rotting out. And so we've got to replace that to maintain air in the aeration basin in train one. So that is, that's an added cost. The biggest component is, well, let me back up. Before the biggest component, you'll see the white line on the far, another color line on the far left. That is a backwash pumping line from the two filters that we currently have under design on trains two and three, which are off the page further to the north. And we need that line in place when those filters are in place. We've got this area under construction now and pretty much torn up. It wouldn't make much sense to us to finish this job, get it back in good shape, and then have to come in later to put that line in with the filters. So that's a component of the, of a change order. And then if you'll notice the bright red line and the bright yellow lines in between the aeration basin and the two circular clarifiers, the yellow lines are about 18 to 20 feet deep and they are part of the old plant. They're leaking. We discovered that as we started working in that area. You pretty much have to replace those because we're going to be building new lines with these sort of the orange colored lines on top of it. So it would make sense to try to repair those at a later date after we've got the newer lines on them. So that is the biggest single cost in the change order. In addition to that, of course, there are days involved because the contractors have to do a lot of things and do this extra work. It's 141 total days to the contract. That would make his completion date in January of this year, which our staff has reviewed all of these times and costs with Freez and Nichols and with the contractor and are agreeable to the final resolution of all various change orders. Also, we have with this memo a recommendation to amend the contract with Freez and Nichols in the amount of, in the amount of $65,736. That's comprised of a couple of things. One, with the two emergency issues we had over on the east side of the plant where the line collapsed and we were trying to repair it, while the line's still functioning as the only inflow of the sewer, Freez and Nichols actually prepared some quick designs for us and those have already been done. So we certainly have an obligation to reimburse them for those costs. And those are identified as $7,400 roughly and $60 respectively. And then they have also given us a proposal for additional engineering or construction based services to finish this job out based upon the complexity that we've seen so far with this project. And that number is $51,510. And that is pretty high, I will tell you that. It's sort of the worst-case scenario, but it is a time and materials contract. They will only be paid when we need them to assist us. So that is in effect the proposal with, we also have a $15,000 contingency request that allows us to, if we have to do anything else, Bruno has the authority to go up to $15,000 on a change order. But unless we have the appropriation from the council, we really don't have the ability to spend those funds. So that is the request. If we have to answer any questions or field any comments.
Any questions? All right. Consideration of proposals in order.
I make the motion to approve change order number five.
Second?
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Change order is approved. Item eight, consider temporary use permit application by SPHC of Texas for a haunted circus on property located near, around North Bay Grapevine Mills Boulevard. Scott Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. James Gresham has applied for temporary use permit for 3580 North Grapevine Mills Boulevard. This would be a temporary use permit not to exceed 30 days as required by the ordinance. It would be from October 4th to November 2nd of 2013. Hours of operation would be 7:00 PM to midnight. They'd be open Friday and Saturday, closed on Sunday, and they'd be open the entire week prior to Halloween. The site itself is located between the Grapevine Vineyard Shopping Center and the NTB. All properties around it are zone CC, community commercial. The properties to the north and south are vacant. The site's approximately eight acres. The operation of the haunted circus itself would be a series of semi-trailers arranged to create a maze-like structure along with a very large tent for queuing. There would be inside and outside speakers. There would be concessions on site. There would be a DJ at the site. All customer parking would be at the Vineyard Shopping Center located to the west of the property. And there, staff feels there is adequate parking due to vacancies in that shopping center for proposed use. And Mr. James Gresham is here to speak to the case.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Jonathan Vincent and I'm here tonight with Mr. Gresham, who you'll hear from in a minute. It's my pleasure to be working with him on this application and I just wanted to make a couple of comments to you. Mr. Gresham is a local Grapevine businessman. He graduated from Grapevine High School. He's going to tell you more about this particular request in a minute. And then, of course, we'll both be available for questions. But we think this is a good thing. It's going to add to the entertainment business here in the City of Grapevine. As Mr. Williams said, the request is for temporary use. You've seen the excellent and detailed staff report on this and the staff is recommending approval. And of course, we're here tonight to also respectfully ask your approval. One observation I simply want to make, and I think it's implied by the complexity of the setup, is that prior to the actual commencement and actual opening and operation of the use opening to the public, we do feel like there's a reasonable amount of setup time that will be required. So we just hope you take that into consideration as well. One good reason for that is that we have worked with the staff, Mr. Gresham has, on things like fire safety requirements, other life safety requirements. And in order to do that right, which they have every intention of doing, he's working with professional people to do this, you want to have enough time to set up to where things get done the way they're supposed to be done. I think that's in everyone's interest and obviously, public safety is paramount for all of us. So I just want to submit that for your consideration as well. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gresham now and he can tell you a little bit more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and council. First of all, I want to say that I was on the Grapevine golf team for four years and the furthest we ever got to play in a golf tournament was Bertleson. So I'm very impressed that they got to go where they did. I had the opportunity to invest in and possibly bring to Texas this haunted circus. It's done, it's been done by folks outside of the state. It's a very professionally-run organization and we're able to bring it to Texas. And so we set up this company and I was certainly hoping that we could bring it to Grapevine and certainly my backyard, if you will. So that's why we're here. I think it'll be good for the citizens. I think it'll be good for young people to get to, young adults to come out and enjoy what we're doing. So thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions, certainly available.
Question?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Not all in favor, all opposed, motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda. It's items nine through 13 tonight, not scheduled for any council debate. Any guests can request any of those items be removed for further discussion at this If there are no responses, do we have any requests from the council? Not item nine through 13 is concerned. Motion is in order.
I make the motion to approve of items nine through 13.
Second?
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Thank you for being with us. Motion to adjourn is in order. All in favor, all opposed, council stands adjourned.